The July 16th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on an issue related to Eden Prairie city government prior to the start of each council meeting. Typically, our council meetings are the first and third Tuesdays of each month. The time for open podium is 6:30 to 6:55 in the council chambers, and if you wish to speak to the city council at that time, please contact the city manager's office by noon on Tuesday with your name and your phone number and the subject you wish to discuss. That number is 949-8412. If time permits, we have unscheduled speakers. This portion of the meeting is neither recorded nor televised. If you have any questions, again, contact the city manager's office, and we did not have anyone for open podium tonight. Before we get started with our city council meeting, I would just like to acknowledge the recent passing of our friend Nina Mackay. There are many tragedies and sadnesses that occur in a community of our size, and we don't necessarily comment on all of those at council meetings. But in this case, it really seems appropriate, as Nina was a very, very active community member, a past member of the Heritage Preservation Commission, she ran for city council, her husband was a member of the Park and Rec Board, she was very active in our community. Nina was a friendly face, a community builder, a network builder, a person who, as her pastor said, connected the dots, who connected people to other people within our community. And we were missing her out walking her dogs on our trails. Our sympathy goes out to her husband and her family, her two children. The first thing we have are some proclamations and presentations, the first one being the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association Award of Excellence for the Edible Playground.
Your Honor, council members, just to tell you a little bit about the program that we are receiving an award for tonight, as you remember, last year, we implemented the first edible playground in our city and, as we're aware, also in our state. And that was made possible by a donation from an anonymous donor, as well as a grant from the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association. This is at Prairie View Elementary. It's a good cooperative relationship with our school district, and in fact, this year, the plants for the garden were started within the school with the couple third-grade classrooms, and many of them were put in then by the third graders from the school. We also received from Marshall some in-kind donations of plants, so it's really bringing a lot of groups together. So as a part of our success there, we've also been able to move it forward to the outdoor center. And that was built, again, with a donation from an anonymous donor. That was built and has started this year. So we're actually on to our second one. Not only do we think it's a good thing to keep moving forward with, but a couple of our staff members who are here tonight, Nicole Weedman and Beth Witt, both were asked to do some presentations to our state conference, and we've got calls from other communities that are now starting to implement it as well. So we're really being looked at as a best practice, and it's a great way for us to communicate health and wellness to young kids. It's also a great way for the school to bring into their curriculum something that's truly hands-on, when kids can learn mass skills about volume and quantities, where they can learn about, you know, biology and plantings. Nicole was telling me today that we're now introducing composting worms and giving kids the experience of what that does to help not only make the compost, but help with the plants, too. So there's some great education, as well as, as you remember from last year, some of the salsa in the afternoon snacks was all made from that garden. And so it's really been something that the parents appreciate, the kids appreciate, and it's helped our curriculum in the summertime, as well as the school during the school year, too. I think because of that and because of the great partnerships we've had, we were selected to be receiving the Award of Excellence from the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association. And so tonight, we have with us Amy Peterson, who I'd like to ask to come forward to the podium, as well as Nicole Weedman and Beth Witt from our department, who have been very instrumental in implementing the program and also bringing it out to other communities, too. And Mayor, if I could ask you to come down and join them to receive the award, and Amy will give a short presentation.
All right. All right. Should I start with my presentation? All right. Well, Mayor Tyra Lukens and the city council here of Eden Prairie, it's an honor to be here tonight. Not only am I a member of MRPA and a recreation professional myself, I'm also a resident here at Eden Prairie, so it's always exciting to present these awards. Before I do that, I would like to take a few minutes to tell you about the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association. The Minnesota Recreation and Park Association was formed in 1937 to foster the growth and development of the parks and recreation profession throughout the state. Presently, we have nearly 900 professional, corporate, board-commissioned, student, and retiree members throughout the state. Members of the association come from municipal, county, state, district, commercial, and private agencies. The Minnesota Recreation and Park Association office is located in Fridley. The MRPA Awards Committee was created in 1987 with the purpose of acknowledging individual members and agencies for their excellence in the fields of parks and recreation and leisure services. Awards committee members represent a cross-section of association members from the state of Minnesota. The Awards Committee feels it's important to increase awareness of the appreciation for the excellent park, trails, facilities, recreation programs, and services that are occurring in Minnesota. That is why the Awards of Excellence program was created. The Awards of Excellence program is an annual program of the Minnesota Recreation and Park Association that was solely created to recognize agencies and their staff for an exemplary project that was either implemented in 2012 or received substantial revisions in 2012. MRPA members may nominate a project for an Award of Excellence in seven different categories: park and facility, programming and events, sustainability, communication, administrative or management strategies, volunteer initiatives, and sponsor and partnerships. Nominations received are then reviewed, evaluated, and scored by Awards Committee members. Only the top-scoring nominations are selected to receive the award. On behalf of the MRPA Awards Committee, it is my pleasure tonight to present an Award of Excellence to the City of Eden Prairie Parks and Recreation Department for its winning project, the Edible Playground Program. The MRPA Awards Committee would also like to recognize Nicole Weedman and Beth Witt, recreation supervisors, who nominated this project for the award. And just quickly, before I go, Jay mentioned this, too, but as, again, a recreation supervisor myself, Jay's right, this has become a best practices. We talk about it at some of our programming section meetings, where other cities are looking at this project as a way to learn on how they can implement it in their own community. So really, props to Eden Prairie, props to Nicole and Beth for really being a standout for the rest of us programmers throughout the state. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for this award, and thank you to staff that really did the hard work in implementing it based upon a resident's vision, so thank you. We need a motion to accept the award.
I would move to accept the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Association Award of Excellence for the Prairie View Edible Playground Project and recognize the generous contributions from the Minnesota Recreation and Parks Foundation New Initiatives Grant and the very generous donation from an anonymous donor.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Fourth of July Hometown Celebration donations, Mr. Lathammer.
Yes, Your Honor, this item is to recognize those who gave both in a monetary way and also in in-kind donations, which I'll list in just a second. But as Mr. Getchell mentioned earlier at the workshop, you had asked us to increase the service level at the Fourth of July and to kind of bring back the excitement, and we were able to do that not only through the cash donations and in-kind donations, but also with the help of a lot of our service groups. So we appreciate their efforts as well, although they're not necessarily listed, they were a big part in making the event as good as it was and to bringing it back to a high-level and high-quality event. So just to let you know who some of our donations were from, JA Price Agency of $1,000, the Primero School of Eden Prairie, $1,000, Republic Services, that was some in-kind trash services, estimated about $1,600, CES Group Mammoth, $500 donation, A-Z Rental, $200, Bergen Autobody, $150, Wal Trends, $125, BIFs, $200 for in-kind hand sanitizers. So those are the groups and organizations that help both in a monetary and a cash donation, and we're just asking you to adopt the resolution accepting that.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Before the council in Rahoe gets in there. Okay, I move to adopt the resolution accepting in-kind donations of $1,612 and monetary contributions of $2,975 for the Fourth of July Hometown Celebration.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, the motion passes, and I just want to take advantage of this time to thank staff and volunteers for the outstanding event. I don't know, maybe you can tell us in a second how many you anticipated were at the fireworks portion of the event, but I was able to spend most of the day there. I did leave just prior to the fireworks, and the interesting thing was when I was rerouted in a kind of circuitous route to get back to Eden Prairie Road, back around Round Lake, all the people that you don't even count in your numbers that are out there watching those fireworks, they have tents set up in their front yards, they've got campers there inside, they're out on their porch and rocking chairs. I saw one boat parked in a driveway, and it was full of kids watching the fireworks. So there are a lot more than you think, but how many do you think were there?
Yeah, our estimate was over 10,000, but I had a very similar experience. When I left, I took a left out of the parking lot and went down Valley View, and I'd never gone west before. The other times, I've always gone east. And I left pretty close after the fireworks were over, and I got at least a mile down Valley View, and there were still people walking, which kind of led me to believe how far and wide they are spread out. I mean, they find a good spot to see the sky, and it doesn't have to be on the beach or in the park. It's well, like you said, it's people we can't even begin to count.
Wonderful event and great band, everything was great. Donations for Safety Camp.
This is similar to the last item in that we receive a lot of in-kind donations as well as dollars that are directly attributed to Safety Camp, but we, and Safety Camp program, which has been around for quite a long time now, it's really coordinated through the police, the fire, and the Parks and Recreation Department, but it also touches every department in the city. And we have a couple people with us tonight that are the lead organizers of that, and one of them happens to be Nicole Weedman, and I'm going to ask her to come forward to tell you a little bit more about the donations, and then she'll also show a short video as well.
Good evening. I have one of my coordinators along with me. Unfortunately, Rob Geist from the Police Department is not able to attend, but Chuck, Rob, and myself have coordinated Safety Camp for many years. This year was our 24th year for the camp. It's held at Lake Riley Park. 180 third graders entering third grade go through the camp each year. It's a two-day program. They learn safety topics such as bicycle safety, internet safety, bullying prevention, street maintenance safety related to snowplows. They also learn about electrical safety, and a lot of the different presentations that are done are done by our police and fire departments, but also assisting agencies that come out and help do the presentations. Fox 9 News sent out Ian Leonard, who did a presentation on weather safety. We also had HCMC come out and do the seatbelt safety, so a lot of assisting agencies come out to give their time to the program. One of the benefits also, we received in-kind donations from many members of the community. Pox Christie Catholic Community gave their space and their audiovisual equipment for the graduation. Devani's gave us a discount on pizza. Bear Path gave us use of golf carts to be able to make logistically a large camp flow very easily. And then JJ's also gave us kind of our get-up-and-go in the morning with some coffee for our presenters and for our staff. Our major contributor is American Family. For 24 years, they have given to the Safety Camp program and generously donated $5,000. And also this year, the Lioness Club gave $750. Through these donations, it allows us to keep our camp fees at a low enough pricing that kids are able to come and benefit from, excuse me, from the safety topics. So we would like to show you a video, short video, of what camp is all about, and pictures show everything, so we'd like to show you a short video.
Booster seat. Booster seat.
We are going to play our bucket brigade. The first person in each team will run to the lake, will scoop up some water, will run back to their bucket, they will dump water inside, and they will hand the bucket to the next person in line.
Just goes up, it does turn black.
So when you hear that sound, what are you going to do?
No, not a scene, no.
So as you can see, we pack a lot into two days. Kids learn a whole lot about safety, and it wouldn't be able to be done, like Jay said, if everyone in the city is touched by this program. But special thanks goes out to the Police and Fire Department and Park and Recreation Department for co-coordinating this program. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a wonderful program, and those of us that have older kids, I think Safety Camp was one of their fondest memories. It was so much fun and so informative, too. Do we have a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting financial contributions, $5,750, and in-kind donations for the annual Safety Camp.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks again for your wonderful work on that well-needed event, important event. Thanks. The next item is approval of the agenda and other items of business. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Move approval.
Can I add one thing to?
Yes.
Second.
Items to add.
I have just a quick council report.
Okay.
Likewise, from under 14A, and I guess that would make it beer.
And I'm going to add something on LRT. Mr. Public Works Director, Mr. Ellis, will you add something on Riverview Road?
Yes, Riverview Road closure under items from Public Works Director, please, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are the amendments to the agenda acceptable to the maker of the motion? And, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the council workshop held June 18th?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstained, I was somewhat absent.
Okay, a motion to approve the minutes from the city council meeting held that same day, Tuesday, June 18th.
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to correct there? All in favor?
Aye.
One extension.
I abstained as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Second.
Anything to prove, hold for discussion? Hearing nothing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. It brings us to our first public hearing, which is LSS Data Systems. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have before a request for a planned unit development concept review with waivers in a zoning district amendment, the office zoning district, and a site plan review on 1.6 acres at 6423 City West Parkway. Notice of the public hearing was published in the July 4th edition of the Eden Prairie News. The city is actually the project proponent here because this is due to a discussion and negotiation with LSS regarding the relocation of parking stalls on their site related to the road project that's occurring in that area. So as part of the road improvement project, additional right-of-way was needed that resulted in the changing of the property lines in the parking areas. So we worked with the property owner to come forward with some waivers for that property due to the project. So we have two waivers, a side yard parking setback waiver from 10 feet to 1 foot along the west property line, and a front yard parking setback from 35 feet to 4.7 feet along the closest point of the north property line. And because there is consent here and to move the project along, you will see after this public hearing and the first reading, we do have this on later on in the agenda for a second reading, and that piece would require unanimous approval, but to allow the process to keep moving forward, to keep the construction project going, to minimize any business disruption, we're trying to get everything done tonight. So staff is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for staff? Seeing none. This is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that wants to address the council on the LSS data systems? Okay. Is there a motion?
See.
Move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 1.6 acres and approve the reading for the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers and zoning district amendment in the office zoning district for 1.6 acres.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next item is Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen, Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request for planned unit development district review, zoning district amendment in the Commercial Regional Service Zoning District, and site plan review on .84 acres at 7995 Glen Lane. So as I think you're aware, several KFCs that I believe went into bankruptcy have been acquired throughout the metropolitan area by Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen, so this is the location of the former KFC in Eden Prairie, and this is an exterior remodel of an existing building, so there are no expansions or major changes approved. The Plan Commission voted 6-0 at their last meeting to approve this project. And we do have the Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen proponents here tonight to give us a little bit of an overview of their project, to talk a little bit about their new restaurant, and following that, they are here and staff is here for any questions that you may have.
Good evening. My name's Dan Henrickson, I'm the architect with Popeyes. I also have Cheryl Fletcher and Karen Rafferty with me with Popeyes to answer any questions you might have about the operation. It's approximately 2,000-square-foot existing KFC, like mentioned by Rick, and we're doing an exterior facelift as well as an interior remodel. It's very similar to most of the other Popeyes prototypes, except that we are using 75% of the elevations are hard surface, which is a local requirement. We are also screening any rooftop units we have on the building, which is another local requirement for the mechanical units.
Upside down.
See that? Okay, you can see on the lower left-hand side, the old facility, which is the KFC, and on the upper right then would be the new facility with, again, brick, stucco, and then metal canopies. So I think with that said, that's pretty self-explanatory, I'll just open up the questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Case.
I have a question of our staff, actually. What is it that triggers a municipal review? I mean, obviously, if someone's painting a building, they can do that, so we're not expanding footprint. Why, I guess I'm more curious for the future reference, too, what is it that triggered this into the review process?
Right, we do have a site plan and architectural review that goes through the planning com-
Look at those issues and make sure the turning radiator in place. I will absolutely have them double check and make sure that it's adequate for the school buses as well, but I'm quite certain that those would have been checked during the development review process.
Okay. Yeah, I have ultimately before final reading, that could be double checked for both school buses. I can't imagine a bus is shorter than a fire truck. But, because that was my one concern about that, is we do have some cul-de-sacs that school buses can't go down in the city, so.
Councilmember Case.
I just want to say that this afternoon I was able to go out and I actually got a tour on a mule, which was a four-wheeled vehicle that had mule on the side by Travis Wetke and his mother, Mrs. Wetke. My only regret is I wasn't able to get out there earlier. It is stunningly beautiful, all of it, from the tree part on the north side to the vista views on the south side, which I know that we, a lot of people don't realize how much of a river town we were 150 years ago, but, so we have six miles of incredible vistas, but overlooking Rice Lake and Grass Lake, it's got to be some of the best in town. It's just amazing. And I guess what I was so pleased to hear and see, some of the most incredible heritage, I mean, as far as we know, Indian burial mounds, but heritage mounds that are still left in the city from what our original 1920, I'm looking at Sherwood, 1920 something survey by the University of Minnesota, is that we always go back to how many mounds we had along the whole six miles.
Oh, you're talking about Winchell, yeah.
Yeah, and the fact that these are really still intact are just incredible. So I'm thrilled about the burial mound preservation, the tree preservation. I know that to put houses in, you have to lose some trees, but the clusters of some trees and there's a, not a good estimate guesser here, but 250, 300-year-old oak tree that's going to be preserved right on the bluff. It's incredible. And then the bluff preservation, something this council has since the Dick Anderson days of the early 90s prioritized. So it's a great, it's a great project and I'm happy for the Wetke family and I'm really pleased that they're memorializing, Lauren's middle name is Reader, so I think he read that, but I think that's just a great, great thing to, that he would be so pleased about. So I'm, I'm really happy with this project and would completely support it tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Wixstrom.
You know, I just really wanted to reiterate that and comment that I'm so pleased with the way the whole process came to bear on this and really appreciative of the developer to listen until the very last minute to potential changes that make the neighbors happy. But also, this is a magical place, these, I don't know, what are they, 80 acres or whatever there, it's magical. And people in thousands of years ago thought it was magical too. So I love that we're keeping this tradition continuing forward by putting something very special on that land. So I, I'm very, very pleased with how this has turned out and I just want to thank everybody for collaborating and working so hard to make it fantastic.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yeah, sure.
Just per our discussion later on, if I raise it during my council member report time about, we have all these places in the city where our individual residences border public property and the encroachment that occurs. And so just how critical it is that the city stay involved anytime we have burial mounds across the entire city and we, we do a pretty good job initially when people first buy house, it's the second owners and the third. And so how important it will be somehow to continue long after we're all gone up here, preserving those borders with some of these really pristine heritage sites.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval? Congratu-, by the way, congratulations to all of you on a really good project.
She moves us right along.
House oriented.
Yes, congratulations. Thank you.
Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wixstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Tara Lukens.
Aye. Next item is a second reading of the LSS data systems issue, the ordinance. Mr. Getcho, is there anything you want to say on that other than it's a second reading?
No, Mayor, I wouldn't add other than, as I said earlier, that the second reading is unanimous approval to move forward, but we were hoping to move forward on the project in its entirety tonight.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So I would move to approve the second reading of the ordinance for plan unit development district review with waivers and zoning district amendment in the office zoning district on 1.6 acres and adopt the resolution approving site plan review on 1.6 acres.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. Reports of council members. Mr. Case.
Really just, I guess a request of staff, but I would want to get council agreement if this is something that you all agreed with. But, you know, we're about, I believe, 80% done as city staff following through on a direction that council gave some years back to basically secure our borders and to go out and find all the areas that are being encroached where people are having swing sets and swimming pools onto parkland and over the bluffs. And so we're about 80% done with that. And in the course of that, several difficult exceptions have come forward through the years that we've just kind of set us, I mean, we've, we've made people abide by the ordinance, but still we've had some consternation as we've studied it. And a couple newer cases in the last couple of weeks have come up where I've been out and it just, I just would like to hear from staff again and maybe run it back through Park and Rec. How's it going? Is it doing what we intended? Would you have any recommendations to tweak or change anything? If not, come back and tell us, hey, you know, stay the course, it's going well. Or there are these bizarre, rare five or 10 or 15 or 20 exceptions that possibly could be looked at through a special permitting process or something. I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm not giving you ideas. I'm really suggesting just come back to us and let us know, is it doing what we intended? Because so often we do pass ordinances and five, 10 years down the road, they have unintended consequences or we just need to relook them. And that's really what I'm asking right now, to reaffirm or bring back some concerns or issues that you might be having with our direction of view some years back. I mean, anybody else have, is that okay? Seems like Park and Rec might even look at it by being given a report or something, go back and tell Park and Rec how things are going. Have them go, well, we're all supportive of it and have them send back to us a recommendation. I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just suggesting.
I guess I would support that as well. I think, you know, there, I've been concerned about a few issues with certain areas of properties. The only, the only hard thing, as we've discussed this many times before, is, is where do you draw the line and how do you, how do you separate those properties where it's okay to do it? And that, that really is always the tough, tough place in this.
Yeah, I'd even go so far as to say I'd like to see what we're, you know, doing with some of these outlots, you know, not the things that are near the lakes or stuff where we've insisted people stop mowing. Are we now, have we picked up that mowing on those outlots or what are we letting happen to those, you know? And there's park property and then there's outlots and they can be very different animals. So I would like a little bit more feedback on, on what those non-park but city-owned outlots, what, what we're doing to keep them, so the people's homes values stay nice.
Maybe we're asking to bring back a couple of the weird ones, just so we can look at them and you can say, this was a problem, but we still, we're still recommending to stay the course, or we have a recommendation, maybe we should try to sell them to contiguous properties or something. Just bring us back the what ifs, because that's what we hear from politically when people call up and are looking for some help. We hear about the strange ones and I'd like to hear back from you. What do you, how are you dealing with them?
Your Honor, Councilmember Case, we can easily do that at an upcoming meeting. We recently did go before the Parks Commission to give an update primarily on our, as of 2012. So that's some information that we have at hand and your information was correct, Councilmember Case. We are now, we've put behind us 1,475 properties. We have about 600 left to go to complete the interfaces. And I think it'd be helpful for us too, because we certainly need, one way or another, we need council support because we are finding in some areas, it's as much as one in three people are trespassing. In other areas, it goes down to one in four people are trespassing. And when you think about your last action with Reader Ridge, those are four areas that we're charged with protecting. They're not parkland, they're not active parks, but we're charged with protecting them. And in the future, if history repeats itself, one in three or one in four people will be parking a boat, will be mowing into it, will be cutting trees. And as of tonight, we just said that they're very important for us to keep and preserve and to protect. And so those are examples, other than just where somebody backs up to a neighborhood mowed park and they're mowing in. I think tonight's a good example where, you know, it isn't. We'll get through that last 600 potentially fairly easily, but we're adding some more. And as I had mentioned previously too, we've also been finding that the people that we ask, the one in three that are violating, when we ask them to stop violating, they, some of them temporarily do, but about 25% of those that we ask to stop violating, if we go back and when we go back and check, did they really stop violating? They're not. 25% of them go back to mowing because they think we won't be back. So there's a time when we may have to go back through the city. Luckily, we're able to do that in a much more efficient way because we've GPSed all the locations now. It'll go much faster than the first time through and with a lot less cost. But whether it's somebody moved in and is now starting something new or somebody just decided they won't come back and check, they've got a lot of city to check, we're finding about 25% of those that we've had to correct are re-violating. And so this is, this is something that, you know, we'll, we'll be dealing with ongoing and is the line the line and does, is that what, you know, the council supported? It was certainly the direction when we, when we got into it. And, you know, we have a couple cases every year, you know, we do two to 300 a year. We've been doing it actively for about seven years and in context, we, out of those 300 a year, we'll get a couple where people say, I don't want to do it, make me do it, or I'm going to call my council person. But 98 or 99% of them say, I get it, I understand, and they, they go quietly and abide by it, at least until we go away. So this will be, because we've been already doing this with the Parks Commission, it's something that will be easy for us to bring back to you and show you, you know, some of the examples Councilmember Nelson asked for too. We'll be able to show you some pictures about, you know, some of it's meant to go back into its natural state, which doesn't happen in a year or two, and some of it, you know, we continue to mow. So we can, we can easily bring that back at a later date.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
I've got two different things here, actually, one of which is there's a public study in the major center area for LRT, not about where the routes go, but about some redevelopment possibilities. There, it starts this Wednesday from 6:30 to 8:30 and it's at the community room at Brunswick-Bowl and it'll be every other week for the next four weeks. And anybody who really is into things that they would like to see over the long term in that area should come to these. They're asking people to try to come to all four or at least three of them. So it's not new people every time because there'll be a different piece of the topic every week and it builds one on the other. But we would like, you know, people to go and I know there's been major effort through some of the immigrant communities and such to get some underrepresented people into these study groups to talk about what they would, long-term, like to see. The second thing is, is the electric lines along Highway 5. And I know that we did send in a letter at some point saying, you know, we didn't want them on the south side of the road. It looks like it's coming back south side. Is there any way we can help at all by sending another letter from the city? Is there anything more that we can do? Because having power lines on both sides of that road, especially going through residential areas, is not going to enhance much for the city.
Councilmember Nelson, we have actually sent, previously sent a letter for public comment and as recently as this week, we're considering sending another based on the recent update, but Mr. Ellis could probably give a better update than I on where that project's at.
Yes, we have actually sent out a letter. I believe it did go out this week and it was protesting the fact that they want to go overhead with distribution lines. And we don't want them on the north side either, frankly. We want them underground. And we've been very clear and I think we're supported by the Department of Commerce, who is also reviewing Excel's proposal, and I think that they have outlined a good case for why they should be underground and we also support that. And I think we've done just about everything that we can to encourage the PUC and the administrative law judge who's overseeing this decision, this route permit, to make sure that they are underground. We won't know the outcome of that decision until mid-September when she'll issue her ruling, but I think that there is a good case and there is a good chance that they will be underground. And we've also worked with the neighborhood and helped them craft a good message to send to the PUC and the administrative law judge on why they should be underground. And I know that that neighborhood is very active and they are preparing to submit a massive number of letters, so.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure we were doing what we could. It both affects their individual homes, but it affects, you know, the whole city in that particular part and it's sort of one of the, the western, one of the major routes into the city. And so I'm glad we're doing what we can and are continuing to send protest letters and such.
You know, maybe as a bit of background to not, just a really quick overview, would be this upgrade, this, this transmission distribution upgrade discussion started about three years ago and they, and they're through, you know, a lot of south, the entire southwest metro. And there was a point in time where there were routes that were considered going through residential areas of Eden Prairie on Duck Lake Road and Duck Lake Trail. And we did have some concerns with the replacement of poles and larger poles and larger lines and, and the residential areas of our, those residential areas of our city. So what, what's being referred to tonight is the new Highway 5 alternative that actually came up within the last six months or year or so. And so what we're talking about is really pursuing an undergrounding of the distribution lines that, that are part of that. And I believe with conversations that we've had with Chan-Hassan, we are on the same page. So both the city of Chan-Hassan and Eden Prairie, several of our residents were all pretty much on the same page and Robert talked about that timeline. But this is something that's been talked about for a while and we want a route that works for the best of Eden Prairie, but has that undergrounding piece as well.
Thanks. Okay. I had a couple of things too. The first is the Star Tribune recently did an article about trash cans being left out too much and I had not heard anything from anybody about this in the past. Of course, today I've gotten an email tonight and I had somebody mention it to me today. I don't know how much of an issue it is for us, I'm just wondering if we have any ordinance on the books about that, screening of trash cans or how long you can have them out there, but maybe staff could just send us a report about what the situation is there. And we might be hearing more from people now that that article was out too.
I think we did the email tonight, Mayor, Council. It's, I remember being at actually a couple of national night out events and that's been brought up in the past. It's not been very common and it was my understanding that we do have code regarding the screening and we have sent letters and reminders to residents, but, but we'll follow up on that.
Okay, great, thank you. The second thing is I wanted to report on a meeting about two weeks ago. Things with LRT are really heating up. There was a LRT open house sponsored by the project office that was held here about two weeks ago and I just wanted to, you know, those events, the people that tend to show are people that have specific concerns or are anti-LRT it seems, but there, it was not very well attended and I just wanted to mention however, a few of the comments that I received. One was that it was hard to find information about the meeting and I know that we had it on our website and there was, the newspapers who did a good job of covering it, but if people heard about it and then they went to the Southwest Transitways website to try to find out more information about it, there was, I couldn't find a thing on it. There were links to future planning meetings, but they weren't even up to date. They ended for April and May and there was nothing else. So truly, their website is kind of hindering this process a little. There were a couple of comments from three people about the proximity, the close proximity of the proposed trail to the Southwest Crossing Apartments and the fear that bad soils there won't allow it to, to go through that area. Bobby and Steve's were there. There was concern about the complex, the Eden complex being split up by a possible trail. And then there was a pair who were interested in knowing how do we stop LRT? And, you know, that gave me a good opportunity to, to educate people that continue, it seems like, to be kind of misinformed about where this whole LRT issue came from. I just want people to know that might be watching, this is not our idea. We did not go to the county and say, we would love to have LRT in Eden Prairie, what can we do to bring it there? This was a proposal from the Hennepin County Board of Commissioners, their HRRA, is that what it is? Decided that it would be something that would be good for the whole transportation system in the metropolitan area. And we got on board with planning meetings and things like that and getting involved in the whole process so that we could protect the, the best interests of our community if this does in fact come to pass. But we are not, you know, just to reiterate, we are not the ones that are making a decision on whether or not it will happen. Having said that, things are kind of heating up and it's, it's always been real unclear in the last 10, 12 years, when are the big decision points in this whole process? But things are kind of coming to crescendo and of course, it's the first community works meeting in August that they're bringing final, somewhat finalized numbers on the costs of different alternatives and the impacts of different alternatives to the community management board, community management committee. And of course, I'm out of town that week. They expected to bring it to us in a two or three hour meeting and have us make a recommendation that same date and a lot of us were just up in arms saying, eh, that's not going to work. We have to have time to discuss this, digest this as a group. So they did plan a second meeting a week later and I will be there for that. But fortunately Kathy Nelson has agreed to go to that August 7th, I believe it is, meeting to represent the interests of the city and we're going to have a meeting staff and Kathy and I, Councilmember Nelson and myself, talking about issues and concerns that we have so that she can carry that message. But you've been very involved. I think you know kind of what our concerns are, so I don't think it's going to be a problem at all. So thank you for attending that on my behalf. I was wondering if our public works director, Mr. Ellis, if you could kind of give us an update on where things are going.
Yes, it was probably the first quarter, maybe January, February of this year that the Metropolitan Council, working through the Southwest Project Office or the SPO, began the preliminary engineering phase of this project. And city staff has really been working hand in hand with them, making sure that the right decisions are made as this alignment is contemplated through our town. And it's really about 4.5 miles of alignment and then of course, five stations through Eden Prairie. So we've been working hand in hand with them, also through the TSAT process in Hennepin County. And there's really a lot of agencies that are weighing in on this, making sure that everything is planned right, built right, because it is a, the decisions we're making now will last generations to come. This is that once in a lifetime project for a city. Through the draft environmental impact statement, the SPO identified what they are calling their 25 key technical issues and we have been working with them to review those technical issues. In Eden Prairie, the ones that are specific to our community are Eden Prairie alignment, specifically through the town center towards the end of the line. There's also the Nine Mile Creek Crossing, the Golden Triangle Station, the Shady Oak Road and Highway 212 crossing, the City West Station and the Highway 62 crossing, and then finally the OMF, for which Eden Prairie is one of two finalists, along with the city of Hopkins for a potential OMF site. SPO's been gathering input, as you know, through the Citizen Advisory Committee, the Business Advisory Committee. They've also established the Technical Project Advisory Committee, which is made up of representatives from the five cities, the state, the county, and also through operations personnel at Met Council. Also, the Southwest Light Rail Corridor Management Committee has been involved in the discussion and then numerous meetings with property owners and open houses have been conducted. And so the, the schedule moving forward, they are looking at a municipal consent set of plans being submitted to all five cities and the county sometime in the third quarter of this year. I've heard the month of September is kind of the target date to deliver those municipal consent plans to the cities. They are hoping to get municipal consent approved plans back by the fourth quarter of this year. So sometime before the end of this year, they are hoping to have municipal consent submitted from the various cities. Moving into 2014, through the first quarter of 14, they look to have the 30% design plans completed. They will continue to work through the remainder of 2014 on design. Fourth quarter of 2014 is when the FTA would issue their record of decision and that's really the big milestone where you can start talking to property owners about acquisition of property. You can now move into final design, but that is one of the key milestones. So a little over a year from now, the FTA would almost give their blessing for this project to move into that final stage. Of course, we know construction would then commence in 2015. It would go through 16 and 17 and they're looking at 2018 as the first year that they'd be accepting fair paying passengers. So I think for the city of Eden Prairie, the month of August is when a lot of information will finally become available on cost. Some of the other indicators is ridership, ride time. A lot of that, it's taken this much time to actually develop that for the alternatives that are being looked at. That will be shared with the public in August. In September is when we would actually have a set of draft plans of a single alignment for us to review and determine if this is the route that we would like to see, the stations where we'd like to see them. But that will be happening very fast and before the end of the year, they're hoping to have municipal consent submitted by all cities and county.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ellis? Okay. Your report of the Community Development Director, Ms. Jeremiah.
Your Honor, Councilmembers, Pure Grace has requested an extension of their lease at our Smith Douglas Moore property for their Dunn Brothers Coffee Store. And the reason for the requested extension is not that it's getting ready to expire. It doesn't expire currently until 2017. However, they are interested in making capital improvements to the store and would like to ensure that they can be at this location long enough to pay back the improvements. And so it hasn't been that long since we really renewed this, this lease in the end of 2011 with the gross rent being $34,000. One thing that we added in 2011 was that if they have sales over $450,000, which is approximately where they had been in 2010, 2011, but that we would get a percentage of 6% if their sales grew. And in fact, with the parking lot improvements that we did about a year ago, we were trying to remember if they were in place all of 2012 or not, but, but we're thinking perhaps not, but they've already seen substantial growth in their sales to the extent that we received $6,000 above and beyond the base rent in 2012. And we see no reason that wouldn't continue, especially if they continue to improve the property, perhaps we'll see even more growth. So the lease term would be extended to nine years to take them through 2021. They would continue to pay the tenant and the lawn care and snow removal. We would continue to pay the property taxes, which does obviously reduce the net rent, which is, would be a minimum of approximately $24,000. It's running closer to $30,000 right now with that 6,000 of sales over 450K. So that's basically where we are with the property today. Staff does believe that this is a very good lease with this property, which of course isn't your typical retail site, so it takes a very specific use to make it work and we think that they're a very good tenant and would love to see them continued through 2021.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Jeremiah? Okay.
I move to approve an amendment to extend the lease between the city of Eden Prairie and Pure Grace LLC at the Smith Douglas Moore property located at 8107 Eden Prairie Road, the Dunn Brothers Coffee Store.
Second. Any discussion?
Just, just to say this community is so fortunate to have Ann Schuster running this business there and it's just such a gathering place. So it really is, it's turned out to be the win-win that we had always hoped it would be, so thank you, Ann Schuster.
Yeah, thank you, Ann Schuster, but it's more than just a gathering place, it's become an icon of who Eden Prairie is. So anytime we win an award, it's the Dunn Brothers.
Take pictures.
I know. It's, it's our icon.
No, I'm glad they're able to expand, you know, in their kitchens and that it is doing very well because like everyone has said, it's been an asset to the city and anytime you get high school kids preferring to go And anytime you get high school kids preferring to go to historical buildings and then other places, you're doing something right.
That's true.
It's a good thing.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Resolution approving Nine Mile Creek Watershed District Development Agreement Extension.
Your Honor, Councilmembers, the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District is requesting a 24-month extension to its developers agreement, which would expire in January of 2014. And this is with regard to the property at 1-2-800-GERARD-DRIVE, et cetera. And it's the old Carwar property, or the current Carwar property, I think we still think of it. And the reason that they need the extension is to just allow adequate time for Mrs. Carwar to move out of the property and then for them to plan for the improvements. And the Watershed District Representative, Kevin Culkey, is here this evening to answer any questions you might have. Staff is in favor of the proposed extension.
Okay. Any questions of staff or of the Watershed District? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution granting a 24-month extension to developers' agreement between Nine Mile Creek Watershed District and the City of Eden Prairie.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Telecommunication, ground equipment screening.
Your Honor and Councilmembers, this is, this item is in response to a resident concern. And Councilmember Mr. Case, as I recall, brought this up at a previous council meeting. And it has to do with the visual appearance of cell tower equipment near the intersection of Cherokee Trail and Old Shady Oak Road. So we did look more comprehensively at the situation with the cell towers and equipment in the city and also our own screening requirements and what other cities have done and where we may want to head with this issue. And just to kind of summarize, there are 30 cell towers with equipment. There are only four that are actually in public right-of-way. And our ordinance does require screening on private property. We have not been requiring screening in the right-of-way, primarily because we usually only have approximately 15 feet of setback from the curb. And so there's very limited room to put the equipment and the screening and still ensure adequate site visibility and that kind of thing. But looking more, in more detail and speaking with the owner of the equipment, this particular property, we do think that there is the opportunity to do some screening in the right-of-way with fencing and landscaping that would take a minimal amount of room. And so we would ask the council if they would be interested in directing staff to propose an ordinance amendment and have it processed through the Planning Commission review and to start looking at potential ordinance to screen the equipment. We would not necessarily be able to screen everything that's existing out there today. We do believe that the owner of the equipment at Cherokee Trail is, will work with us on some screening there. But as anyone comes in for any additional equipment or any amendments at all, we would then try to pick up the screening on the other properties as well, assuming the ordinance obviously passes through the public process.
Yeah, sounds good. Councilmember Case?
Yeah, this concerns me. Mr. Russell, I thought at the meeting when I brought this up, that it was understood that our ordinance did apply and that we didn't differentiate public and private property. This is the first I'm hearing of this. So why? Why the change?
We were, I was reading the ordinance quickly that night and frankly, did not distinguish between the two.
But our ordinance does distinguish between the two?
And staff has taken a closer look at it and Ms. Jeremiah adequately, you know, properly reflects what we've got here, that we have not been applying those screening regulations in the public right-of-way. And they require permits in those other areas. And coming through the public right-of-way areas, it has not been a permit situation because those are facilities permitted within the right-of-way.
So it's that permitting process that was the distinction? It's not that we didn't, it's not that we stated public property doesn't have to meet our same ordinance requirements, it's just that we didn't have a tool to enforce that because they didn't have a permit process?
We didn't have a, yes, I think that's correct. We didn't have a tool to enforce it. When we went back and looked to see what the approval process was for this particular property, there was not a permit.
But we do have rights as a city to like, if an electrical company were putting poles in that were ugly or something, or, I mean, we have certain controls, don't we, in what goes into our right-of-way? I guess all poles are somewhat ugly anyway, but I mean, if there was something, don't we already have some police jurisdictional powers over what goes in our right-of-way?
Within the right-of-way, where there are utility easements that are dedicated within plaits for utilities, the public utilities have the right to go within those areas. And so the extent of our control is more limited than when those facilities are put on private property.
I understand that. It just seems like if, you know, the utility boxes that go at the ends of driveways in newer neighborhoods, we have no control over the size or if they start to spread out? Or I mean, we just have no control whatsoever in, of utilities in public right-of-ways?
Well, we have site distance, we have public safety controls in terms of site distances and obstructions.
So I understand the whole electrical voltage, all that issue, but just all the exposed wires, granted, maybe it doesn't kill someone if they touch it or cut it, but there's no safety issue whatsoever to having just 150 wires exposed all?
They're all low voltage, to my understanding. They're all low voltage wiring. And so it's not a, it's not a safety issue, even if you cut most of those wires that are exposed, that you would have access to. I don't think there'd be any safety risk. Obviously, it would be detrimental to the operations if someone were to analyze those.
So if we pass something eventually this year, as you say, it's, everyone else is, well, there's only three or four, but they're all grandfathered in. So not until they came back for some change would we have any control based on this new ordinance?
As you were making your introductory comments, I was writing myself some notes about just exactly where we would put this in the code and want to explore with staff whether there are opportunities to put it in the code in sections other than the zoning code that are subject to the grandfather provision. So I want to have an opportunity to discuss that with staff and where that makes sense to do. And the implications for enforcement and the cost of administering it, if it's outside of the zoning code where things come through a process and you're able to efficiently deal with them as part of that process. If it's not part of that process, then how do we pick it up and make sure that it's covered? So...
Well, the frustrating part is we're creating these ISOs on property that we actually own, and then we're controlling the ISOs on private property. I, it's just completely backwards to me. And it just seems like we have to find a way on the land that we control and that we are responsible for and stewards of. We have to have, find a way to control the ISO piece. And I mean, these are, these are very ugly contraptions of wires and equipment. And if it's on our property, I want to be able to go back to our people and say, "Well, at least we're controlling what's on our property." It seems like exactly backwards now. We're controlling what's on private property, but we can't even control what's on our property.
Well, I would, I would ask you to distinguish between our property and property that we hold in trust by virtue of a plat. The property that's our property, property that we purchased, property, park property that we own, we can't, just like with the towers, we don't have to allow a tower, a cellphone tower onto a piece of park property.
I get, I get the distinction, sure.
And so the easement areas are held in trust for the benefit of the public, and the utilities have the right to be there, as opposed to our being a landowner and controlling what's in those owned areas.
But we still, we still have control in that we have ordinances governing the height of a pole. I mean, we still have control, so we clearly are allowed to have control.
And, yes.
And that's what we're doing tonight. I understand that, so...
And that's a public safety issue, the height, because of fall zones and those kinds of issues. And so we will be looking at, staff has already been looking at this very carefully since we raised it, and we'll be looking at it further.
Well, as much as I understand the voltage piece, I'd still love to find a safety angle, even if it's kids climbing and they're getting trapped. I mean, it just seems like there's a safety component here. If we dig deeply and look at research around the country, I think there's something in there. I wouldn't want my kids playing in it, even if you tell me they could cut it with wires and still be okay, or wire cutters, but, well, this is good. I just want it to be as strong as possible. And definitely it sounds like we're going to be mitigating the issue at Cherokee, which I think we can do, it sounds like, just by negotiation. Good, good.
Okay. Did we have a motion?
We did not have a motion.
Okay, all right. Motion, please?
Move to direct staff to prepare a code amendment for review and discussion with the Planning Commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Report of the Park and Rec Director, Mr. Lotthammer.
Your Honor, Councilmembers, this item relates to one of our two community gardens that we have. The location of it is south and east of the Super America, or actually mostly directly east of the Super America on Pioneer Trail and Flying Cloud Drive. That's the first one. The second community garden we have is at Pioneer Park, which is directly behind the senior center. Give you a perspective on size, at Pioneer Park, we have 32 garden plots. At the one on Pioneer Trail, we have 88 garden plots. The Pioneer Trail location, though, is leased to us by MAC. And we have, in the past, had a three-year lease agreement with them. And so one of the changes coming forward is that they're indicating that they would only renew it for a year, and that year being this particular year. So at the end of this December, we would not have a lease with them. And they're indicating that that would likely be the case, that we would not be able to renew. We know, you know, that recently they've been talking about developments, so that's obviously something that they've been thinking about. So wanted to bring it to your attention. It's something that would impact, you know, the gardeners that we have, you know, over 70% of the gardens are located at that particular location. We're starting as staff to think about, you know, are there other locations that we could develop? We would certainly want to keep in touch with MAC to determine, are they really going to not re-lease it to us next year? There's certainly some things that we do on an annual basis to make them gardens. At the end of September, we would have some work to till things under. In the spring, if they were to re-lease it to us, we would certainly take garden reservations. And people are doing that with us after the first of the year. So there's some things that, from the gardener's perspective, are fairly time-sensitive. And some people, just to let you know, are fairly parochial about their certain garden plot because every year, they till it under in a certain way, they amend the soil in a certain way. And so they will be, you know, very attached to that specific area, even if it is the case that we need to relocate that. So tonight, the action item is to basically extend the lease to get us through this current garden season. And we can certainly keep you posted. And we'll be asking more questions of MAC, you know, how time-sensitive, would they be willing to do it, continuing on a year-by-year basis until they might actually have a real development in hand? So with that, I stand for any questions.
Does the revenue that we get from gardeners for a plot cover the rent that we pay to MAC?
You know, we get a little over $100 per plot, you know? So it is more, our lease, the price escalated a little bit. I think it's $453, I'm sorry, $420. So, you know, well more than cover it.
But rent's not the only expense?
No, it's very reasonable rent. It's having access to the facility.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
If we don't get it, I mean, do you think you have a good spot identified where we could, you know, relocate?
You know, we've talked about potentially down at Lake Riley. We don't have a lot of, and even that used to be a riding arena. And so at one point, it was, a lot of sand was hauled in. So there would be quite a bit of work just to get that soil amended, basically, even if that was a good location. But it's a pretty big footprint, when you think about it. It's a couple acres. That one is close to the feel of a, almost of a soccer field to it. So finding that flat, level footprint that has good parking and is accessible, and one of the things, I live fairly close to there, and I see a lot of people, especially from the older generation, that walk from the neighborhoods there. A lot of times along Pioneer Trail, I see them walking with their garden tools in a bucket. And so some people have selected that as much on location as anything. The ones behind Pioneer Park, because it's affiliated with the senior center, we give priority to seniors. That's in the past. We've, so most of those 30-some spots are taken up by seniors. And then the pioneer ones get open on a returning basis. But we've filled them basically every year, so over 120 garden spots.
Have we looked at any of our outlots that we're trying to figure out what to do with?
Creative, very creative. Councilmember Wixter?
I feel very strongly about having a community garden. I think it is a way to provide a resource to folks, not just in the neighborhood, but we have a lot of people who live in townhouses and apartments who, this is something that they can really sort of get involved with, and it's a very important community asset. So I think we should try to find another way to offer this because I think we're going to have 88 very unhappy families or individuals. So I'm a little bit concerned also about how we will communicate with those 88 people. And I know that we've got our regulars that are out there. What do you think it is, 75% come back every year?
Yeah, it's a pretty high retention that we have, yeah.
Yeah.
And we have their emails and addresses. I would, I guess I'd recommend that we would be careful at this point to fully sound the alarm. And we'll do some kind of backup planning, and we'll continue to, as we get closer towards the end of the summer growing season, we'll continue to work with MAC to say, you know, "How close is it? Couldn't we squeak another year out of it?" And see what their thoughts are on that.
I agree with you. I think that's a very good idea. And the other thing is, it will give us time to see if we can identify, maybe it doesn't have to be one huge plot, but it could be two smaller ones or three smaller ones in various parts of the city. I think that there would be benefit to that as well. But I think you're right about not sounding the alarm yet because perhaps we can identify those and then send a letter out with options that would sort of salve the frustration that I think folks are going to feel.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to approve the lease agreement with Metropolitan Air Force Commission for the community garden plots area.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. Report of the Public Works Director, Mr. Ellis.
I'm Matta Mayor and City Council. I just quickly wanted to report that as a result of the nearly five inches of rain we received on Saturday morning, we had to close Riverview Road today between Hennepin Town Road and Parker Drive, and specifically at the point where Purgatory Creek crosses Riverview Road. We tried to salvage the roadway last night. We saw that there was undermining of the culvert that carries Purgatory Creek underneath Riverview Road. We dispatched our utility crews out there to try to salvage the road. It held up through the night, but this afternoon, the road started settling, so we did close it to all traffic. We will be meeting on-site with a consult, engineering consulting firm, and begin the process of developing a design and acquiring the necessary permits to get the new creek crossing built. It may be a bridge, maybe a reinforced box culvert. We'll determine that as we go through the process. So it will be rather lengthy. I could see this being closed for two to three months, maybe even longer. But I wanted to report that to you, but we are actively pursuing a solution.
Okay, thank you. Any other business? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Beginning adjourn.[1772.11]